Good evening, welcome to our June 22 called Town Board Meeting. There will be one sworn testimony, that's item five. So at this time, I'll call me into order and please rise the fable for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is invited by the United States of America and David Alvin over his hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, God.
And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jim Littleton from the Holly Springs United Methodist Church. Welcome back Pastor, come on down.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor so much for the opportunity to come tonight, I'm very grateful, Council, I'm grateful to be here. Let us pray. Hey God of grace and mercy, we give thanks for the gift of this day, for the gifts you give us God, the gifts of knowledge, the gifts of compassion, the gift of love, the gifts of wisdom. We're asked for all these gifts to be poured out in our leaders night, our community, on our staff and merchants, we continue through this unprecedented season. God asks that you continue to be with Holly Springs, be with our community, help us to love our neighbors. God, I pray for your blessings upon this meeting, you give thanks for our elected officials, I ask you give them wisdom, God, and give them your sense of peace tonight. You thanks for all of our staff who serve this city and work so hard to make it the wonderful place it is. I give thanks for all in our community who've pitched in to help each other during this pandemic, during this time of need. Lord, I ask you bless this meeting and we give you thanks tonight. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again Pastor. I remember for the adjustment approval of June 22 meeting agenda, Mayor Pro Tim.
I will make a motion to accept the June 22 2020 meeting agenda with the following changes, move items six, seven, nine, 10, and 11 prior to item five.
Motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you. First item on the agenda would be agenda nine six, consent agenda, Mayor Pro Tim, you're up first.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passed unanimously, thank you. Then I'm number nine, new business selection of town councils, UDO steering committee representatives, and that would be Ms. Gina Clapp. Hi Gina.
Hi, good evening.
Planning and zoning.
Yes sir, I'm Gina Clapp with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm actually here on behalf of Melissa Sigmund, who is the project manager for our UDO update. And tonight, what we are here to do is to appoint a primary and a alternate member to the UDO steering committee. And so if you'll recall, back in May, the town council approved the contract to begin the rewriting of our unified development ordinance. June 1 was our project kickoff date, and so staff has been in communication and working with our consultant, and we are right now starting to discuss and prepare a public engagement plan for this project. In July, we're going to be conducting our stakeholder meetings, and then hopefully after those stakeholder meetings in July, beginning our steering committee meetings. And so with that being said, we're working on trying to get our steering committee established and who our membership is going to be. The purpose of the steering committee is to work hand in hand with the consultant team that we have, and they are going to be meeting potentially around monthly, and will be reviewing and helping provide some feedback, and also assisting with our public engagement and acting as project ambassadors throughout this process. The steering committee is going to contain staff members from the town, town council representative, a planning board representative, and then we have several positions on the steering committee that are going to be professionals in different areas of expertise that will assist us with some knowledge base that we may not have internally as we're working on the writing of the regulations of the unified development ordinance. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, if you are ready to decide who would be your representative and alternate.
I think we're looking for suggestions from the council, am I correct?
I would be happy to be the planning board consideration, I usually attend all the planning board meetings, the board of adjustment meetings, you know, so I'm getting a feel for some of the public spots that might be, but it doesn't matter to me which one, but I'd be interested.
Anybody else?
I'd be happy to jump in there as well, I mean, after spending two plus years on the planning board and all the involvement I had with the planning board, I'd be happy to continue that work.
So would we appoint Christine Kelly as primary and Sean McGrath as alternate representative? Since you spoke for, that's all you.
Nobody else wants him?
I don't think so.
I'm gonna fight for it.
Dan?
I'm happy with that.
Randy?
No.
I don't have a say.
Okay, someone want to make a motion, I guess, please?
Motion to appoint Christine Kelly as the primary representative and Sean McGrath as the alternate representative of the town councils, the unified development ordinance steering committee.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passed unanimously, thank you, welcome aboard, thanks for your service.
Thank you, see you in July.
Thank you Gina. Well, I want to go backwards for just a second, I got so enthralled with having our Mayor Pro Tim do the first, I skipped the public comment period. So Madam Clerk, how many did we have? I think we got them all, but.
Yes, you were emailed them all, you received three public comments, all three were against mandatory mask wearing, one of them was kind of combined that with concerns about public demonstration.
Got it, okay, thank you. And as everybody knows, we do this that way as we're doing the COVID-19 concept here, and it works fine. Then number 10, new business park ordinance update, Leanne Plummer, Park and Recreation Director, you are on, young lady.
Good evening Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am here, Leanne Plummer, Director of Parks and Recreation, to bring forth some changes and updates to the park ordinance. The purpose of tonight, again, is to update our ordinances for the safety and enjoyment of all of our park users and to protect assets and the natural resources of town parks and properties, and we'll be asking you tonight to approve the motion or to, motion to approve an updated policy to establish chapter 10, Parks and Recreation, Article 1, sections 1 through 10 of the Holly Springs Municipal Code. Just to remind you, this effort is in line with this previous plan initiatives of healthy, active, and engaged community, as well as ensuring a safe and friendly community. Again, why are we doing this? It's important that we have safe, equitable, and consistent use of our town parks, and by doing so, we need to establish some general park rules. As I indicated at the workshop a few weeks ago, chapter 10 is currently reserved for parks and recreation ordinances, and this effort would create those 10 sections to have consistent and full use throughout our town parks and facilities. As I indicated, there are some park ordinances that currently exist, most of them are in chapter 12, under Public Safety, Article 3. The drinking in public places would remain as is, the discharging guns, firearms, and firecrackers would also stay the same. We are looking to repeal and replace sections 12-350, used to town parks, and section 12-351, smoking in parks and park property, and then keeping section 12-352 enforcement and fines, as well as the Article 5 around parking in parks and recreation facilities. Just a quick overview on some of the sections, the new ordinance clearly defined what a park area would be, including our outdoor athletic facilities, greenways, open space, and areas leased or maintained by the town of Holly Springs. That would be in section 10.1. The sections that are, we are asking to be repealed and replaced include information around the hours of operation, that section would be replaced with a recommendation of park hours, including 5 a.m. to sunset, with five exceptions. Those exceptions would be if we have lighted facilities such as tennis courts or athletic fields, if there were regularly scheduled programs, if we had authorized rentals, and changes for holidays or emergencies within those park hours. The other section I do want to talk a little bit about is under prohibited acts in parks, and that was also the change from the prohibiting smoking, now it's updated to include vaping. So both smoking and vaping would be prohibited in the park area. The other sections are defined as indicated, and if there are no questions on any of the proposed sections, there is a suggested motion for tonight.
Before the motion, is there any questions or comments? Yeah, I think we've done do this before, pretty sure.
Just a quick question, Land, did we get any, did you get any feedback or in the process of coordination? I mean, we talked about this from the law enforcement perspective, did you get any feedback from Holly Springs Police Department about the law enforcement?
Well, so we had coordinated with law enforcement as to propose some of the changes, and again, unless there's really an outrageous violation, we tried to enforce these from an education standpoint first, but then we use the non-emergency contact number should we have a need with law enforcement, but we really tried to educate the community first.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, if not, who would like to tackle the motion?
Motion to adopt ordinance 20-03 to create a new Parks and Recreation Ordinance regulating activities in town parks, park facilities, and greenways.
Okay.
Motion made in second, let's start the roll calls, just for the record. Dan Berry?
Aye.
Pete Nelson?
Aye.
Christine Kelly?
Aye.
Sean McGrath?
Aye.
Aaron Wolf?
Aye.
Unanimous, I didn't write them down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Dan. Now the addition is next, and is item number 11, COVID-19 Community Response New Business. I think based upon some of the reading I've had back and forth on emails, that Sean McGrath might lead this one off.
Actually Mayor, I might introduce it if that's okay with you.
Sorry?
I might introduce it and then pass off to Sean if that's okay with you.
Please do.
Thank you Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for agreeing to add this to the agenda tonight. There are two discussion points that we identified, there's certainly more could be addressed if it was the will of the council. The first was for a discussion about a mask requirement, and the second of which was the formation of a community task force to aid in our response to the virus. Allow Councilman McGrath to introduce the task force discussion, since he's been the one who provided us a framework to go off of for that. But to start with the mask requirement, that was an important discussion to have in light of Wake County's announcement that they were going to leave this as a municipal issue, and then also in response to the incredible amount of citizen engagement we've gotten around the issue, both for and against, over the past couple days, which has been nothing if not passionate, I'd say. And I think I speak for everyone on the council, when I say that we certainly appreciate everyone reaching out to us with their input, and while it's one factor we must consider when making our decision, it is not the ultimate end-all be-all for any of us. And let me also say that despite some worry we receive, I think I can speak for all of us when I say that this is not a political decision for anybody, and though we may differ in our ultimate determination on this issue, I truly trust that the conclusions are made in good faith, and with the best interests of our community at heart for each of us as individuals. So there are a couple of points I'd like to discuss, but I think some might not be needed depending on the first discussion. Now, with discussion with Randy, I think as far as a mask requirement, there are two ways we could go, we could take action as a council, or we could take action to amend the emergency declaration, who will give Mayor Sears the authority to institute a requirement if he saw fit, and I am recommending that we discuss the second. I think that Raleigh's tac, or Raleigh's method of instituting this is the way to go, and I would leave that up to Mayor Sears, and for that reason, I think that it's important that Mayor you be involved in this discussion as well, if you're okay with that. I know generally where we all stand on this issue from conversations, and I want this to be a fruitful discussion, so I don't want to turn this into a debate about science and a debate about the facts we're using, because I also don't think that we're going to get very far having that discussion. I might be the only one up here who's been trained in epidemiology, and I'm by no means an epidemiologist, and I do not pretend to be, and I do not believe that I'm qualified to interpret health data, that's why we have public health officials. But what I'm hoping for is a discussion that we can have where we are, where we can do what we are tasked with doing, which is finding some compromise on a difficult issue and finding a solution that works best for our community. So with that, I open up the discussion on the mask requirement.
Well, I guess based upon your comments, I should start. I would remind everybody, and this is just rehashing what you already know from my position, this all started at the Wake County Mayor Association, the invite Zoom, and the question from the Raleigh mayor was, who's in favor of mandatory, who's in favor of recommending? The results were two yes for mandatory, and that was Raleigh and Knightdale, the rest of the mayors, including me, were no. And as I stated from the beginning, the governor is still unrecommended, I was thinking who's going to speak today, he did not, he speaks tomorrow, we'll see what he says. As Aaron said, I certainly have no political agenda either way, but recent phone calls, I got about probably 400 at this point, which is the most I've ever gotten in my career, I would say there are roughly about 16, 40 for recommended, there's a lot of very strong compelling reasons on both sides, and some of them are personal, and some of them are data driven, okay? I would call your attention to the one issue, and this is why I voted with my authorities at that time, for recommended was that it is impossible to enforce, and I think that came out very clear the last night and this morning on television, where you saw what was going on in Raleigh, which is one of the two that is recommended, or is mandatory. I would say 90% of people in the bars, et cetera, without masks. I'd say that's a good idea, and Randy and I have even talked about maybe if this stays recommended, if, that we could do a better job of communicating our recommendations, strong recommendations. But this time, I'm going to stick with my guns, if you are concealed carry, you know that wearing a mask is a felony, that's another one. And if you want to make a resolution for or against or whatever, the council, that's fine with me. For many, many years, about 19 now, the buck has stopped here on this issue, this type of issue, on the handling of same. And I will wait the governor and doctors calling tomorrow, but I'll open it up for whoever wants to speak, or whatever they want to do. Because I'm getting a little tired.
Mayor, just as a, just as a potential clarification on the concealed carry things, I know that was a comment and concern from one of the residents, I did talk to Mr. Shifano about that today, and it looks like, and Mr. Shifano can correct me if anything has changed since our discussion earlier today, that it is a class one misdemeanor, and remains a class one misdemeanor even if you've done it multiple times, so. I don't know, I don't know that that really changes things a whole lot, I mean, it's still, it still makes it more challenging for some individuals, and I think that does cloud the situation a little bit. But I will, I will follow on, since I'm already speaking, not to waste any time at the moment. I certainly am not in favor of the mandatory, the mandatory word, mandatory is a very strong word. I personally watched some, what I would call somewhat horrific verbal altercations in my travels across four states to move my daughter in the last week and a half, between here, Virginia, West Virginia, and Ohio, a couple of them in Virginia where people were shouting and some nice expletives coming out of them, yelling at people for not having their mask on, and I'm like, okay, when does that, when does that turn into verbal fisticuffs? And we already have enough unrest in our society at the moment with some of the not here thankfully in Holly Springs, let me be clear about that, I'm very thankful that the unrest is not here in Holly Springs. But in other places where it is, where there's people, you know, with rioting and everything else going on right now, it's, everyone's amped up, and I'd not want to add something else in there. I did speak to my, my brother-in-law last night, who's a dentist out in, so he's right in the thick of the medical field dealing with this and dealing with people in close proximity on a daily basis, now that he's back practicing medicine, and he actually lives just out of Seattle, outside of Seattle. And Washington, as we all know, has been one of the more strict locations on this, and what they have done, and I would see as potentially a little bit of a middle ground here, is they have not asked, but mandated all of their businesses and places of, well, medical business, retail business, whatever it happens to be, they've mandated putting up a sign on the entrance to those facilities that basically redirects people to the CDC guidance, which is a recommendation that if you cannot maintain social distancing, that you wear a mask. So I think that's a, I think that's a relatively good compromise. I think it's a little bit of folly to try and ask people to have a mask on as they're walking down a sidewalk, where they may or may not be able to, and most of the times able to maintain that social distancing. And there's some variety out there, whether you're looking at the European side, where they're using a meter for social distancing, three feet, versus what we're using here in the US of two meters or six feet, there is, there is a disparity between, between kind of the two common medical groups out there, whether it's the European side or the US side. But I think there's a potential compromise to be had there that, that doesn't put us in the bind of a challenge for enforcement, but still a responsibility to help people understand that if you're going to be in close proximity to others, then it's worth putting a mask on.
Who's next?
I'm happy to go.
Go ahead.
The emails that I read, and I, there were about 100, you had 400, I saw 100.
I did.
Brought up some good points, and I was not sure about the concealed weapon law, so that's good to know. I did take it to heart, the folks that were concerned about enforcement, and so I've been thinking about that, and also some of the conditions that people have talked about of not medically being able to wear a mask, situations when they're eating, and I think some of it is an education on when a mask is possible, and we can't have a mask on if the dentist is working in your mouth, you can't have a mask on when you're eating. But I pulled out, the Kinston, North Carolina came out, and it's not mandatory, but it's highly recommended that they wear masks, but the language here it says, are required to wear a clean face covering anytime they are or will be in contact with other people who are not household members in public or private spaces where it is not possible to maintain social distance, or where recommended social distancing practices are not being followed. And then they listed some businesses, so I think that, I mean, that seems more like common sense to me than anything else, and if we looked at that and coupled with enforcement for our law enforcement would be education, and maybe for a timeframe of several weeks with education only, and not use anything stricter than that, because I wouldn't want to put a burden on our crews, because I think that was, that was very valid comment that people had. So I think there's ways that we could put the language in that covers a lot of the issues that people had about, I can't wear them, my, you know, medical condition, include those if you're looking at yourself, have, have this kind of language, it says if you are not in a place with social distance, then we want you to wear a mask. I think modeling as a town would be great, though I don't know what the policy is for town staff to wear a mask, but I think that's another thing that we could look at ourselves. And if the enforcement was more education, kind of like what happened in phase one as well, you know, getting phone calls about playgrounds, and it was education at that time, and I think that went really well. So I would be in favor of coming up with something that keeps in mind some of the concerns of state.
Dan, who's in the line, I guess?
Yeah, I think for me, it comes down to common sense, and a lot of practical applications, if we're pragmatic about this. If you're in a large group of people, I was at the Black Lives Matter March on Saturday, there was a lot of people, social distancing was not a thing, and I wore a mask, because there's a lot of people and you're in close proximity, and that's the recommendation, so I decided it was within my personal tolerance to do that, so I wore one. I'm not wearing one here at Town Hall, I feel like I'm adequately spaced out from others, and within my personal risk tolerance, decided that for me, I did not need to wear one to Town Hall. And I think people should have the individual decision for themselves, for their families, in consultation with their own doctors, to consider these things, everyone's health situation is unique and independent to them, and I think people should make their own decisions on where, how they wear masks or don't. The public, the public emails and outreach that we've received has been really good, it's, you know, as I said last week with the, one of the special exception uses we have, it helps as a policymaker to make decisions, and you get a lot of input from the residents and the people that, you know, the people that you report to ultimately at the end of the day, so I appreciate everybody that took the time to email and send in their thoughts, there was a lot of links to articles, data, I tried to look at probably two-thirds of them, I went through each of the articles and data sets that were sent over. But I think I'm content with what we have right now. One resident, you know, we were, we had an email exchange, and probably on the second or third reply, they came back and said, you know, maybe it makes sense just to have a public education campaign on the masks, similar to something that you had mentioned. I completely support that, I think it's fine if we take the state guidance and reiterate what the state guidance is, this is what it says, the three W's or whatever they've put out, and we can do a public education component, you know, through our communications and marketing department, put stuff up on our website, I think the verbiage, you know, that you had, the word required was like the second or third word in there, so I don't think that's something we'd want to model, but however we could recommend and reinforce the material that's been put out there by the Department of Health and Human Services is certainly something I would support, I think there's benefits to wearing masks in certain situations. There are limitations, and there are risks for people that have breathing problems or other medical issues that would not allow them to wear one for a continuous period of time. So as long as we tailor the messaging appropriately and look at that, I'd be completely supportive of an outreach campaign, but I don't think there's, I don't think there's any changes I would entertain at this point to our emergency declaration.
Thank you Dan.
Pete? My apologies Aaron, I am digging into numbers a little bit, and that's kind of my background, so, especially as it relates to Holly Springs, because that's really what we're talking about, is our residents here. I would like to point out a little bit that our, the positive test rate has not changed since phase two opened, it was 10% there, and this is all data that I saw in the NC Department of Health, everybody can have access to it, it was 10% positive test rate on May 22, the day phase two started, on this weekend, June 20th, it was 9%. So the increases that we've been seeing, they're not, certainly not good, but they're due to increased testing. The positive test rate has fluctuated between 8 and 10% since phase two's opening. The Holly Springs rate of affection is the lowest of all the communities in Wake County, including Raleigh, except for Rollsville. Our rate is more than three times less than North Carolina, as well as Raleigh. And, you know, that's a sign of our success, I believe, of compliance, and, you know, something we should be thankful for, that our residents have, have accommodated that. I also looked at Durham County, they have a mask requirement, they've had it since April. So going back to May 22, when phase two reopened, the phase two reopening occurred, Wake had 1,390 cases, Durham had 1,210 cases. This weekend, Wake was at 3,579, Durham was at 3,151, exactly the same percentage of case difference. So when I look at that, I see that masks did not necessarily improve, or lessen the number of cases percentage-wise as they did in Wake, which did not have a mask requirement. I think that's again, a good sign of compliance and voluntary use of masks. One interesting thing that I calculated was, again, the, going back to the positive test rate percentage, numbers go back on the NC Department of Health site, and you can correlate that, the overall rate of percentage, positive rate of percentage for North Carolina to individual communities, roughly just based on population and positive test case statistics. Doing that, we are about a third of North Carolina's positive test rate of 8 to 10%. We are a third of that based on the, the number of tests throughout that time, our population, and the number of cases that have been reported. I, I'd like these, this information, these numbers to provide a little bit of comfort and assurance to our residents that we are doing a pretty good job here in Holly Springs. Compared to the rest of the communities in Wake County, compared to Raleigh, compared to North Carolina as a whole, we are, we're compliant, and our residents, we should thank our residents for that. They have been doing a good job of being, being careful and, and doing what's necessary to keep these numbers low. Based on this information, I do have trouble all of a sudden switching to mandatory, we're not. Based on this information, I do have trouble all sudden switching to mandatory, we're not. Raleigh's a different scenario, their numbers match a little bit more North Carolina, we're not Raleigh, we're Holly Springs and. Our current declaration. I feel like it's been very successful in keeping our numbers lower than any other community around here and North Carolina as a whole as well. I am certainly in favor of reiterating. And strongly encouraging the continued use of masks in public, especially where. Social distancing is not feasible or not happening. But I don't feel like mandatory is necessary at this point.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Aaron, I think I know what you're going to say, but go ahead.
You have no idea, man.
We talked a lot on this weekend.
We did. Always enjoyed to spend my weekend talking here. I, like, like everybody else reiterated, the feedback from the community was super helpful. And anytime that we get great engagement on this, I think it's worth discussing, and so I really appreciate that, and I appreciate everybody. Having a frank and open and respectful conversation about something that has obviously caused a lot of debate in our community. I'm, I choose to wear a mask and I've worn it, as everybody knows. For several months now, as a small business owner, I have instituted a mask requirement in my hospital. We don't allow the public in, but all of my staff is wearing a mask at all times. And I do it not. To protect myself, because if anything has been clear, it's that the data shows and the studies show that. This is not going to protect me if somebody exposes me to the virus, this is to protect others from me. If I was infected and potentially shedding. So while I understand and respect the need to let individuals choose what's best for them and their family and their own personal health, there is also. There is a duty to our community. And to protect others from us, and that's why I always thought it was worth discussing now. It sounds like it's the will of the council not to move forward and that's fine, and I'm happy to compromise, I think there's been some good ideas thrown about here. Having our business community involved in pushing this, I think is a great way to go forward. Enforcement would always be an issue, as the mayor and I discussed. You know, if we set the bar for every new law that it has to be 100% enforceable and 100% effective, we're not going to pass many laws, because no such law exists. Even in Raleigh, the pretty strict ordinance they passed, they're not enforcing it, they're using it as an educating tool. The police are handing out cards with the ordinance and explaining the benefits of mask wearing, and they did that through this weekend. Mayor Baldwin actually said today that she has no plans to immediately start enforcing it and that they're in an educating phase, and I think that's the right way to go. My view on this is, I think I might have discussed this with everybody at this point, I'll always err on the side of caution, I'll always. Err on the side of being proactive, I think an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, so if we can get ahead of something. And if doing something as simple as wearing a mask will prevent us from sliding back, seeing our numbers rise, seeing restrictions placed back on our economy. Then I am all for that, I want schools open, I want our business, business community to reopen. I think this is a pretty non-invasive way for people to show commitment to our community and do that. However, if it's not the will of the council, I think that the idea of requiring businesses to post. NC DHHS or CDC guidelines on their entrances to any enclosed space, I think is a great idea, I don't see a need for it in public spaces, but. I think that's a great start to further the education campaign in our town. I don't expect our businesses to, I don't expect to require our businesses to start enforcing that. But at least requiring them to post that educational material for our citizens, I think is definitely a good place to start. Don't know how everybody feels about that.
I'm writing.
I agree, the only challenge I have with what's on the, I looked at all three of them, I think I looked at all three of them now in the last couple hours, so. Between NC DHSS and CDC and WHO, they all vary a little bit. And I think that North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services is the least specific, it's the most vague. About mask, it's just the three Ws, it's just wear it all the time, so that just kind of leaves it open, it doesn't even explain to people that, you know, hey. Because we've all kind of jokingly, you know, talked about the folks that are driving around in their car by themselves with a mask on. You know, that mayor may not be the best thing to do, so, you know, so when people see that kind of stuff, you know, it's, hey. You know, we need to do this all the time, it's, I don't think that's, I don't think that's effective, so I. I just ask that we use a little bit of caution on that, but I think the CDC guidance and Christine, what you, what you read off there is nearly identical to what's out on the CDC. On the CDC website, it almost matches that, now, the requirement part is not there, but. You know, the recommendation to wear a mask anytime you can socially distance unless you happen to be a person. That shouldn't have a mask on, if you have difficulties breathing, you have a lung condition that doesn't allow you to breathe. Correctly without a mask, or with a mask would certainly not be a case, and that's, that's part of the challenge, and I think that also helps us to. Make sure that we don't have somebody walking down the street that physically can't wear a mask. And then someone jelling at them because we make it mandatory and they don't know, none of us know that. One of us doesn't have a mask on, doesn't have that breathing condition, and I agree with, you know, Councilman Barry's perspective on, you know, what we talked about. You know, why we're wearing one, yeah, I was, I was out there on Saturday and I had my mask on as well, when you're not able to socially distance in a large crowd like that. Yeah, okay, that's for the other people's protection, and, you know, this is a cultural thing, and that's why in my response to some of the residents I put in there. You know, some of the ulterior views, if you will, of other cultures, and I happened to live in, you know, the Asian culture for four years of my life. Where they, it's cultural, they put a mask on anytime they're sick for the protection of others. So, you know, I know last year we didn't ask people to put masks on and 62,000 people still died from the flu because. They got infected because the community spread. So. We still had 62,000 people die from the flu last year. And there was no huge outcry at a mandatory mask, so, again, I think this is an educational thing, I think it will help, you know, if we. Remind folks when they go into closed and. Confined spaces where they can't socially distance to wear a mask, I think that's helpful, but. If beyond that, I think.
Aaron, I didn't want to bore everybody with all this, I was going to read every one of these pages. To kind of supplement why, as the mayor with his. So I say authority opportunity at this one time, I thought I did the right thing. I would hope that even if you're disagreeing with what I did, for whatever reason, you know I did it for a purpose of. What I thought was representative of Holly Springs. Not Raleigh, but again, when ten mayors came, I was the first one to say no. Ten mayors came behind, or nine mayors came behind me, I thought I did the right thing, I still do. But I obviously offered the opportunity for anybody to speak differently than you did. All right, the question I have for all of you is, okay, what's next, what do we do?
I'm supportive, I think, I think Councilman McGrath and I are supportive of businesses posting educational information, I think the content of that, we can. Debate, I'm personally, I like the three Ws, I think it's easy to digest for people and it's straightforward and good messaging and it's. Consistent across the state, so that's what I would be supportive of.
Are there comments on that subject?
I'm supportive of that, if we put that caveat in there, when you can't maintain social distancing, so, because I think that's an important caveat, that's also out there from. All of the medical experts at the CDC and the WHO, it's very clear that it says when you can't maintain social distancing. So, and like I said, there's even a disparity with the WHO, they're using a meter or three feet versus, you know, two meters here, so. You know, our CDC guidance is six feet or two meters, so. I just, that's the only, I don't mind the three Ws, I think it's, I mean, it's easy, it's, you know, it's catchy, whatever. But, but I think it's, there's an important caveat to put on there, because otherwise I think we're going to get. People that are going to quibble about the rules, and I appreciate it, we got, we got comments across the spectrum, and I appreciate all those comments as well, and. I read one, every one of the emails and that all the data that the people provided. So I just, I just don't want to open up that to, you know, people going, well, see, it says wear it all the time. Well, okay, how about we wear it if you can't socially distance, if that's why we're putting it on businesses anyway, because it's a challenge to socially distance, and I think that's an important. Thing to put on the side, if we're going to mandate it, people put these on, you know, business interests, entrances in Holly Springs.
Any other comments?
I am, speaking as somebody who's with messaging all the time, what I like about the three Ws is it's simple and adding extra layers to, we're already saying it's not mandatory. So I would like prefer to keep it clean and put it out there as an education opportunity. And not have all these asterisks attached to it, that's just, because people are going to scan it, they're not going to read everything. The only other question I have is, and Pete, I love that you went through numbers, because I was, my concern has been watching the numbers for a town. You know, I wasn't worried at 19, 23, then it jumped up, and now we're up to 64 today, what is that curve that you need to really start to say? When we needed it, that it becomes more of a concern.
I think we could approach, somebody can answer that, I start.
I think, I think honestly, I think that's a question for you to answer, Aaron. Since this would ultimately be your determination, and you'd said that you didn't think the numbers were. Really supportive for a mask mandate, so what, what metrics would we be using?
I look at the metrics of what percent are tested, are tested positive. That's something that I'm going to say out loud, but I think there are certain people. In the government who kind of not use that very often, and I did have a little bit to do with Dr. Cohen's comment about two months ago. Two years, two weeks ago. That said, the testing is going up like this, we all know that. The numbers are going up like this, but the percent of people testing positive have only gone from, and Pete, I think you mentioned this. Eight or nine percent, and maybe possibly 10, so let's be say, P B is one death. I hate that, it's one death, it's us, so I vote us, I didn't vote Raleigh, I didn't vote anybody else. That's why I went, and that's, I think. Probably shouldn't say this out loud, I think there's certain people. Not that we're talking about right now, who have a propensity to add fear effects. I've said it during our town board meetings, you may or may not agree with that. I've had neighbors who stayed in their house for three or four weeks afterwards, not going out because of fear. And when they found out what the numbers were, I think they were better off. But I think there's a lot of fear versus facts, and that's me talking to you. Agreed. I think the way this has been presented to us many times. I believe there's a little fear factor thrown in there, and I don't buy that. But the numbers, the data, and then that's, the reason I didn't go into this. Is I have that in here. From people who are aligned with OSHA and everybody else, everybody's got data. And the data that's given to me is recommended, not mandatory, that's why I speak for it. I have no personal issue with this, it's not my bad. I made, I made the decision based upon having 19 years of experience in doing exactly what I did. I did it for the tornado, I did it for the flood. To infer that maybe we should change that, that's fine with me, but that's going to need a motion, it's going to need a motion from the council. And I would be an M, whether upset or even laid up. I think I'll stay my ground. And the other thing is, when you have an emergency, like we did with the tornado once down through Eber Ferry. The next morning, we met in the fire station. And I can imagine me saying, well, I gotta get all the council together and get that, I think that's why you voted the way you did, you know, I talked about this. You can't do that, you could do it, but you can't, because you have to make a decision like that, so I'm going to rest my case on that.
To be clear, we can get, Pete, did you say we could get zip code specific testing data or just case data?
Just, just case data, so if you go to the Wake COVID site, you can see the number of cases for Holly Springs, and then I just correlate that with. The total cases in North Carolina, the population of Holly Springs, and just do some rough calculations that way.
So if we're talking about percentage of cases testing positive, we'll probably be using county data as a whole.
So far, it's eight to 10.
Yes, okay.
Eight, eight, nine, I think the last one I heard was 10, and somebody said to stand down to mine, I don't know that yet, I'm waiting for the data tomorrow, I probably just wanted to say.
Could we agree on a percentage where we should revisit this conversation? About delegating this authority? Just in case.
I think that's always, always wise, I don't particularly enjoy a piece of this, which I've already explained to you. And I will continue not to enjoy that part, but to say, let's say the numbers go to 20%. 25%.
Quite honestly, you know, I'd be hard to believe that Governor Cooper would not. Make a statewide change if the percentages that we do have start rising above 10%. At which case, I imagine that would be a statewide, but I don't want to delve too deep into Holly Springs, as we are well below all of that. But we may be along for the ride based on state data.
I just got to say one last thing, I know I'm harping, but I'm not harping like I was going to be, right, I'm not harping there. Ten mayors. All are good, did what they think was right, not because of me, because of them. Wake County also did what they thought was right. And they stayed with recommendation, or recommended. So I think there's an awful lot of reasons why it makes some sense to at least consider, hey, maybe they're not wrong. And again. Without, without pointing fingers at Raleigh, it ain't working. And whatever you say, or you don't say, it doesn't matter, but the thing is. My input also matches how I voted, I didn't have the input when I voted. I didn't, didn't have anything, it was a dinner at night at 8 o'clock, what do you say? And. I stick away there. As I told you before, when we have some kind of a disagreement, I hope a friendly disagreement. Because in this world today, there ain't a whole lot of friendly disagreements going on. Then I, what I say, I'm sticking with it, okay?
So it sounds like we've all reached a consensus about the language between mandatory and recommended. What I don't like about this, and that's why I pulled it directly up and wanted to look at all the sites, is there's the three Ws for NC DHSS. If you leave home, know your W, so it makes, it implies that if you leave your place or residence, put on your mask. And that's the problem that I have with NC DHSS, because if you go to the CDC website, the direct verbiage is. Wear face, wear cloth face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. So, those are two direct quotes from the health experts out there. I know this is simplistic, I think it's overly simplistic, I think there's an easy way to change that, to just still be as effective. Use the three Ws. Wear a cloth face covering when socially distancing is not. As the CDC says, social distancing is difficult to maintain. It's adding a couple of words, but I think they're important, because I think it's a challenge for.
My recommendation is if our action is going to be to promote the governor's recommendations, then we should promote the governor's recommendations and not be. Fiddling with it or revising it. If that's going to be our action, then that should be our action.
I'm, I'll speak for myself, I'm fine with that. We supported all his actions that were mandatory. If he changes his mind on the 22nd, I have. A mayor, as everybody, not everybody, most people understand and most people know. A mayor has the authority, at least I did, to go and make anything that the governor says, make it more. Rigid, I guess is the right word, but not less. So right now, it's recommended by the governor, if he says tomorrow. It is now mandatory in all Wake County, everywhere, or as a matter of fact, the whole state. Will not hear a thing from me, I won't agree with it, but I'll go with it. And that's a keen sense of direction, I'll agree, I'll agree, I mean, I'll go with it, but I won't agree with it. Tomorrow, we'll find out. And my last statement before was, let's wait for the governor tomorrow, that was my position at first.
So if we were to make this in the form of a motion. What would that motion look like? Motion to require businesses within Holly Springs to post the governor's recommended three W guidelines in a conspicuous manner at the entrance to their business. And the town could provide material for them? Would that be?
Yes, if you're looking at me like, if council does go in that direction, there are tools, I think we can tap into to provide those resources for businesses.
What's, what's the conversation on that one?
Still stuck on the word require, you know, I think a lot of our businesses today have the opportunity to say whether or not, like yourself, as a small business owner in charge of.
Still stuck on the word require, you know, I think a lot of our businesses today have the opportunity to say whether or not, like yourself, as a small business owner in charge of the facility, you have the opportunity to say, I'm gonna require my staff or my patrons to wear a mask. I think our business owners today have that same ability. I've been to several shops in town already that have requirements, and I've put my mask on to go in there, because I've chose to patronize those, those businesses. I'm certainly supportive of, you know, using our resources, whether economic development, partnering with the chamber, communications and marketing to get that messaging and that material out there. But I stopped short of the word require, I think, you know, in the same vein as my earlier comments, those business owners can make a decision for themselves as to whether or not they need to institute a requirement for their place of business to, to wear a mask, but we could certainly pound the pavement and go out and say, here's the material, if you choose to post it, post it, you know, but here, here it is, it's, we can proactively do that. But not have the word required, because it's the same thing as requiring a mask, we get into enforcement and frankly, that, that probably has just as an effective rate as the mask requirement is saying, hey, business owners, post this up, and what if somebody doesn't, what's the penalty? Are we gonna send police out to their business to say, you don't have your sign up, so then, then what? Educate, you know, put it up. It's a lot of, a lot of resource, right, but I'm, I'm all for spending the resources and the time to get the messaging out there and make sure the businesses have the opportunity and the material to do so. I just, I just stopped short of the word require them.
Suggestion?
To direct staff to provide material to local businesses and recommend they place them in a conspicuous manner at the entrance to their establishment?
And without even saying, unless something happens tomorrow or the next day, but we don't need to say that. All right? Let's try to get a little.
In which case, I will spend half an hour with you guys that I will always treasure.
Why don't you make, go ahead and make the motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to direct staff to provide local businesses with the three W guideline. How should we say it? Paraphernalia? No.
Material.
Materials, and recommend that they post them in a conspicuous manner at the entrances to their establishments for the education of the public.
Second.
What do you mean second, all favor, let's do the roll call, it's a roll call. Dan Berry.
Aye.
Pete Nelson.
Aye.
Christine Kelly.
Nay.
Nay, okay, Christine Kelly votes nay. Sean McGrath.
Aye.
Aaron Wolf.
Aye.
Quarter one, it passes, that's where we are. I appreciate having the opportunity to give me, you my more sense on this, and I say again, we'll wait and see what the governor does tomorrow. If he goes mandatory, like I said before, we'll do it, I don't like it, but we'll do it. All right, Sean, I think you're back on again, okay?
Roger. I think, well, hopefully everyone had a chance to, to see what, what I threw out there. This is obviously something we've been talking about in roundabout terms for the last couple of months. I think it's time that we take this opportunity to potentially lead out of, or help to lead out of kind of the darkness of COVID, if you will, and, and and try and get similar information out, much like we're just talking about, in an educational process. But trying to help everyone establish where are the disparities? So where are the disparities between different organizations, whether they're businesses, small business, large business, whether it's some of our private or public entities that are out there, faith-based organizations? Everybody coming together to kind of share best practices is really what this is about. I mean, that's, that's really what a task force is, is you're bringing, you're bringing different mindsets, different bits of information to a table to solve a common problem. And that's really the essence of a task force, so the strategic framework that I threw out there for a restart, and I stole the mayor's verbiage for that, so to restart Holly Springs Task Force. I think every, every task force, and it should, start with some type of joint statement, so the joint statement that, that I threw out there was, "We are committing to rebuilding public trust and competence in our Holly Springs motto of being a great place to live, work, play, and shop. We will do this by bringing together representatives across our community to establish recommended solutions and best practices as we restart our social, our societal interactions." So, you know, every, every task force has, you know, some type of, you know, foundation, if you will, desired outcomes, so I outline, outline those with a few key questions to try and look at what are the current community conditions, so again, to Councilon Volson's point of data, is do we have relevant and specific data that's available to make decisions out there? What is the economic health of our society right now? Are there incongruencies or inconsistencies between large and small businesses and their abilities, ability to, to operate? What is our societal health? What is the level of public interaction that we have right now? Do inconsistencies exist out there between private and public events? So, and then goes on to, you know, look at what are the risks? Look at that risk reward matrix and then forecast what our future needs are. And then the last thing I have out there for kind of the strategic framework, and I didn't develop intentionally so, the operational or the tactical, because those are how we operate, and then very specific, you know, as we just talked about, whether that's communications or training, but is, is looking at who the stakeholders are, and so my recommended stakeholders for, you know, for the moment, certainly up for, up for addition or subtraction. Civic leadership, healthcare experts, certainly those with firsthand knowledge of the local conditions here. The Chamber of Commerce, nonprofit organizational rep, faith community rep, a large business rep, small business rep, and a public safety rep, and then some community at large representatives. Again, trying to limit this to probably no more, you start to get a task force that's probably more than twenty, and it's just gonna become unwieldy, unwieldy, and you may not get the type of input that you want. Honest and open feedback and, and input so that people feel like they have a, a place at the table where they can provide their input and be heard. And, and go about that, and just try and provide a, an opportunity for us to facilitate our community coming together right now. Much as we are, you know, even, even the event that was on Saturday, you know, community coming together and, and some, some folks protesting, but being surrounded by, you know, our law enforcement officers and, and being part of that, so everyone coming together as, as part of that conversation, I think, is, is kind of where, you know, where this is at, and where my thinking's been on this for the last couple of months, of how we bring those people together, and we're, we're able to do that. There's, there's roughly twenty of us in the room right now. I think we can, you know, have a, have a setting and a forum where we bring those folks together and and we have a good conversation that we can facilitate. We're not directing anything, this isn't policy setting, this is facilitating a conversation and figure out how we come up with best practices that help us move forward. So that's, that's the nutshell.
Our station? Ideas, thoughts, reactions? I saw you right up, thank you. I can't find it right now, but I saw, I got it, I got it. Right track, more track?
Who's the, who's the audience for the output, the recommendations, things like that? Is it us as a body, is it the town and all of its residents? Everybody look at it to see the input, or is it, like, where, where does it go from once it leaves the task force, and then how is it?
Right.
Implemented?
Yeah, so, so the key thing, I, I think the, the, I've talked to Randy in the mayor about this, I think that the key thing coming out of any type of this discussion or task force is a public joint statement. Because here's why we did this, here's what we're doing, and then each one of those individual reps taking back that information and those recommendations to the broader audience. So if we have a faith community rep that is representing the multiple faith community leaders in, in our, in our community, then I would expect them, it sounds like there is already some of this grassroots going on right now, of some of those faith leaders getting together, and that's just one example. But then being able to take that back, and then it's the chamber being able to take that back, so the other, the other document that I forwarded you to the FEMA guide, that's a guide that I recommended to the Triangle J Cog audience, and, you know, the fifty-year-old folks on there, and most of them, a couple of them called me up afterwards and goes, hey, what was that again? So that I can, you know, use that in our, in our community. And then I also had a good conversation with our Chamber of Commerce about that, and passing that document on, it's, it's a framework, it's, it's there are questions in their framework to basically get you thinking. And that's what this really is, it's a, it's a primer to have somebody who's representative from those organizations to go back to the other organizations and go, hey, here are some, here are some things that we all came up with that we think might be best practices as, as we lead out of this. And, you know, our, just an example, obviously, our, our economic development team has done a great job of that throughout this, of whether it was the small business loans, or providing, you know, a venue to bring information together collectively and, and to share that. And so that's, if we wanted to get to that point, and that's sophisticated, where there is a website where we can share our best practices, I think we can, you know, have that discussion as we go along. If somebody's willing to take that challenge on.
Now, all of you have got this information at this point? And you, you said, right?
I did, yeah.
Would it make any sense to take that information, we can talk about it more, of course, take that information back, think about it, add comments, get back to us, Sean, remember, say, here's some additional ideas, here's some ideas I have some kind of an issue with.
It's a starting point.
Yeah.
That make sense?
Mayor, I think that's a great suggestion, because I have questions, I, I still was trying to figure out the scope and what the outcome was. And, so yeah.
This is. Together some quickly.
Let's do that, if everybody agrees, consensus that you take it home, you look at it. We get staff information too, perhaps?
What I would ask, if everyone does that, is, is let's try and, let's try and start socializing this, if we're all gonna move forward, socializing this with some of those community leaders that we think may be the best fit to help come to this, and see if they're willing to participate, because this is going to take people's time. This is, this is volunteer effort, this is, this is not a paid effort, so I know that's a challenge, and, you know, that's something I think we need to, at least that's, that would be my concept.
I'm not too sure what I would socialize, because I'm not sure of the scope, so that's my problem right now, is I think. Because you want measurements, you want outcomes, so that's all. I would rather wait, but that's just me.
Well, my, my concern with socializing would be, I'm not quite sure what I would be asking of the leaders at this point about their time commitment, the duration of it, or when it would start, so I think that those are things you would need to.
The only, the only thing I'm asking, Aaron, is, is basically, is there a, is, is there a willingness? Is there a willingness for folks, is there an interest, is there a willingness? That's, that's all I'm getting at, not, not anything beyond that.
Not trying to actively, trying to gauge public interest, I understand, okay.
I think the broader, the broad approach is good, getting a, you know, how, how do we find the way to get a broad piece of feedback from all these different, however, whether we expand that or not, but getting broad feedback from different segments, different people that are involved in the community helps provide better information, more feedback, more data, more experiences that people are feeling every day. So that, that approach I like, I think the, you know, the hard part getting over is, as you said, it's a volunteer effort, so it's a challenge to, A, get people on board, and B, get them to be productive. And then the last part is, how do we? How do we, what do, what do we get out of it, and then what do we do with it, right? So for me, it's just seeing that end, that end goal, but absolutely support the broader approach, and if there's a way we can, we can pull that together, I think it'd be good.
Yeah, I agree with Mayor Purton Berry, I think one of the things I'd like to see all of us try and come up with is some action items attached to that, and to make it the most productive, I think that that's something that we can all kind of brainstorm.
I think if you have somebody or some other individuals you know quite well, who you think would be very good at this, share that. I think I've got a couple in mind already.
Right, and, and I didn't, I didn't put that stuff on there intentionally, I mean, you can look at the FEMA document that I provided, and it has all those same things, but I just didn't want to go into that level of detail with the first shot across the bow, and I just wanted to provide a one pager where it was, you know, somewhat easy to digest, where I was kind of vectoring and not, not the very specifics.
I volunteer my time as healthcare experts.
That's only for pets, though, isn't it?
We're not worried about the animal.
Veterinarians are at the forefront of public health, Mayor, don't forget where this virus came from.
Besides, our pets were.
Go heal the bats.
Okay, we good at that, all set? All right, let's zip right along to agenda number five, it's a public hearing. Carolina Springs Master Plan nineteen M A S O three A O one, slice twenty, S U H O one, slice twenty, S U O two. And I assume, if you go any further, you did all get this from the journal?
Yeah.
Which in essence says, if I may read it real quick, "Triangle Town sees huge sports complex, join mixed-use project," I love this. So with that, I will ask Sean Ryan from Planning and Zoning, and Rachel Jones, who I guess she's here, I think, from Engineering, to come forward and get this one going. And thank you for waiting out there. Hi, Sean.
Hey, how's it going?
You got it.
All right. Sean Ryan, Department of Planning and Zoning. This agenda item is a request for a detailed master plan and a special exception use for Carolina Springs. So tonight, we will consider the master plan and the special, special exception uses. As far as requested actions, we will conduct a quasi-judicial public hearing. Then there will be findings of fact for the special exception uses, as well as a motion for the detailed master plan. This property is located on approximately four hundred acres in the northern part of our jurisdiction at seven three zero zero Woods Creek Road, which is south of NC five forty and Greedia Parkway interchange. The request before you tonight is for a detailed master plan. Carolina Springs is a rather large, complex project. We started with the planning and development, which really established the basic zoning framework or development of the parcel. Tonight, we're considering the master plan, which starts to establish the details for the main infrastructure that will serve the development. If approved, we will move on to detailed development plans and subdivision plans for the various components of the project. Also, tonight, we will consider two special exception uses for sewer pump stations located in the neighborhood district of the planning and development. This is the town's land use and character plan. The property is designated with three designations on our land use plan, natural areas, which are reserved for preservation and recreation, mixed residential neighborhood, which includes neighborhoods that have several housing types mixed together, as well as regional center, which is energized centers containing a mix of businesses, entertainment, civic, and cultural uses. Also indicated on the screen for you with the yellow stars are the approximate locations of the two pump stations that are being proposed. This is the current zoning map for the project, you can see it is zone planning unit development. The PUD was established to be a mixed unit develop, mixed use development with four primary districts, a town center district, which is primarily commercial, an innovation district, which is more of an industrial zoning district, the village square, which is a mixed use district, and the neighborhood district, which is the primary residential district. Again, you can see the two yellow stars indicate the approximate location of the two pump stations. This is the master plan map from the planning and development, you can see how it generally divides the project into different districts, and as well as shows the primary conservation areas, as well as the preliminary alignment for the major roadways and the dark black dashed lines. And then moving into the master plan, which is before you tonight, you can see how it takes that information from the land use plan and the planning and development, and starts to put the detail behind the infrastructure, so you can see the major roadways, the greenways, as well as the utility information. And we'll now invite Ronland Bishop with our engineering department up to go through the utilities and infrastructure.
Thanks, Sean, hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So on this slide, we're looking at the overall major utility layout of the master plan. As Sean said, we're kind of just establishing the major infrastructure with this master plan. You can see highlighted in blue is the water, purple is reclaimed water, green is gravity sewer. And, and the yellow stars are the two approximate pump station locations. One thing I'll point out is that adjacent properties have been stubbed with the utilities, and that is in accordance with our engineering, design, and construction standards. And so tonight, you are considering the special exception uses for the location of the pump stations, but you will be reviewing the site plan just for pump station one. And pump station two will be coming before you at a later date. One thing I will touch on for pump station number one, I know a question came up earlier about security. So the pump station number one does meet all of our engineering, design, and construction standards for security, and that includes a six-foot fence that is locked, it does have a gate and it's locked, that has barbed wire on it as well. It is lighted. I have the wattage noted, but it's a really bright light. And those are all in line with our standards. And those are all in line with our standards for pump station sites. I'm sure applicant can speak more to security measures on site if you have more questions about that. All right. All right. This slide is giving you a look at overall transportation. You can see the road widening areas highlighted in yellow. Woods Creek Road, that'll be widened to half of the ultimate four lane median divided cross section. Same story with Old Holly Springs Apex Road. I will say that the other side of Old Holly Springs Apex Road has not been planned to be widened by Apex County or N C D O T at this time. There, there's no funded project for that widening at this time. Woodfield Dead End Road will also be widened. Today it's just a dirt road, but it will be widened to a two lane residential cross section. It has on street parking and bike lanes and sidewalk. That will be eventually taken over by the town. At the time it is constructed and is approved and under warranty. So at that time, the town would take over maintenance. There is a portion to the north that is in the town E T J, but not within the PUD. So that portion of Woodfield Dead End Road does not get approved or improved with the PUD. And it would stay with N C D O T maintenance until the time that these properties that are just in the E T J now are annexed into the town. So that annexation will come before you all and the the decision for, you know, taking over the maintenance of Woodfield Dead End Road will be coming before you all next month, I believe, at the July meeting. And then also we've got the greenways highlighted here. And the blue is showing new construction. So we've got the Carolina Springs Boulevard in the north, south connector there. Purple arrows are showing spots for future vehicle connections that will be made with subsequent development plans. Here's just an overview of the T I A. So to backtrack, the T I A was completed with the PUD. With the master plan, the traffic phasing memo was submitted. That was a part of the original T I A. It was resubmitted. And the phasing memo, it breaks up the PUD into chunks and kind of says, you know, this is phase one, this is phase two. And it has associated trip generation that comes with that and tells us what improvement, offsite improvements will be triggered at that time of the phase of construction. And so we have that memo. It'll be a really good tool as we kind of move through the PUD and we start receiving development plans. With each development plan, a trip generation memo will be submitted and we'll be able to compare that trip generation with what was approved in the T I A. We'll be able to see what offsite improvements are triggered with that. You can see the future traffic signals. None of these are warranted at this time, but they will be continued to be monitored with each development plan and subdivision plan that comes in. And when those are warranted by N C D O T, they'll be designed and installed. And I think the applicant has their traffic engineer here tonight. So if you have any more questions about that, he is here to talk about it. And with that, I will welcome up our planning board representative. Mr. Chris DeShay.
Go right ahead.
I looked at the nine zero zero and I thought, yeah, let's, let's have him come up. It's nice to have something that wasn't terribly controversial for a change.
Well, hello, everybody. Good evening. Planning board, we saw this one. There was not a lot of questions around this side. There were questions from the planning board around why pump station one, was there a difference between pump station one and two? I'm not the expert. I wrote some notes, but I prefer the applicant to speak to that. But some, the planning board did have questions around the traffic study and traffic in and out of there because the roads, it just wasn't, it wasn't really clear about traffic. And there's, there's some other pieces around traffic. So there was a small discussion about that. No questions?
Chris, I remember a while back, one of the questions asked about this development was transportation, like what did it accommodate buses? Did I come up again?
That was not in the past meeting, but that one, you're right, that did come up. That was January, maybe, when we discussed that and we talked about with buses, would there be bus transportation? And there was a conversation about Uber versus taxis.
Or is there enough room if there was something?
Okay. Because like even if there are stations for Uber stations or for, you know, for places where you can just congregate to get a ride.
Before, that was during the discussion on the architectural standards.
Yes. Yes. But it's for the pump station, there was not a lot of discussion.
We're good?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Back to you, Sean.
That is all for staff unless you have any questions. Otherwise, the applicant has prepared a presentation for you.
Other questions or comments to staff at this point? We've been down here a couple of times. Well, good. Does anyone wish to speak to the applicants? Maybe? Yes. Come forward and please, we have no, excuse me, go ahead. Matt Kirk, we have no one signed up for the public. Okay, so applicants, you're on, please introduce yourself and who you're from, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ed Tang with Wetherspoons L, one fifteen McKenan Drive in Cary. We are the civil engineering firm, working on the Carolina Springs project. And with me in the audience today, I have representatives from Lurral Homes, our site engineers, our utilities engineer and traffic engineers to answer any of your questions after the presentation. As staff mentioned, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so my presentation will kind of cover both in the time that I'm allotted. So I'm going to just give you my credentials before we dive into the bulk of the presentation. I'm a registered professional engineer in North Carolina and in Florida. I have been practicing civil engineering since nineteen ninety-four. And I've been working here in the triangle since two thousand and three, predominantly designing and managing residential subdivisions, commercial centers and office buildings and other institutional uses. With that, I'm going to wrap up my credentials. And as Mr. Ryan mentioned, we're here tonight to present the master plan and the special exception use for the Carolina Springs project. As you may recall, I'm going to scroll forward. Back in February, you all approved part one of the master plan. You just all brought up the architectural design standards and that was approved right before the COVID pandemic. So this is the second half of that master plan where we're bringing in the detailed master plan and we're coupling that tonight with the pump station special exception use. And as staff mentioned before, the master plan, the detailed master plan will establish the primary circulation network for the roadways, the tree conservation, the primary utility network, the backbone system for utilities and any common landscaping areas. All of the development plans and subdivision plans will be further along in the process and then next steps if the master plan is approved tonight for all the other uses that are within the PUD. This is the PUD that you, the council approved back last May, similar to the image that Mr. Ryan had on the screen before. And as you can tell from this, there are the various districts within the approved PUD. We have the town center district, starting from the right hand side of the screen, working to the left. The innovation district, which is that light blue color that is the site or a portion of that site will be part of that future iceplex that you all have heard about. The purple areas of the village square district, which would consist of the mixed use residential, office, retail and some of the high, more intense developments. And then the neighborhood district will consist of primarily, primarily single family attached and detached residential. And there's a town park parcel that was also agreed upon to be dedicated to the town in the future. This is the master land use plan, not a whole lot different than the previous slide. As Mr. Ryan mentioned, this brings a little bit more detail engineering wise to what was approved with the PUD. It shows the roadway network, the east west roadway on the screen, running across the top one third of it. That is the collective road that's shown on the town's transportation plan. The north south road here, which is the existing Woodfield Dead End Road, that's currently a gravel road. And it shows the surrounding road network, Woods Creek Road, running along the southern border of the site and Old Holly Springs Road, running up here to the five forty interchange with Rudiya Parkway at that exit. And this also gives you an idea of some of the open space areas that are natural, that will be left untouched. The stream here, the north south stream here, the big one is called Big Branch. And then the smaller one on the left hand side, the west side of the site is Little White Oak Creek. And topographically, if you can all picture this, these two streams are at the lowest point of the site and Woodfield Dead End Road is a ridge line on the site. So everything left and right of Woodfield Dead End kind of drains down into the stream areas. This shows the master grading plan. I know there's a lot of detail on here that is probably hard to see on your screen, but it shows the preliminary engineering for the roadway network that I described. It also shows some of the locations that are planned for stormwater control measures or B M Ps, as they used to be known for the site to serve for water quality and stormwater detention. I also forgot to mention earlier in my previous slide, this also shows on the left hand side of your screen, the future Wake County Public School site, the E fifty one schools, the elementary and middle schools. That they now own directly due west of the Carolina Springs project. This is the master utility plan, a version of what you had saw from staff's presentation earlier. I'm not going to get into the detail of it, but there are water sewer and reclaim lines shown on this plan. One thing I want to highlight is the two locations that are in color, the two pump stations, pump station number one and number two, that are the subject of the special exception use tonight. And further after that, the site plan, the preliminary site plan for pump station number one. Pump station number two, the site plan, as staff mentioned, will be coming at a future date when that is triggered. This is a zoomed out view, approximately got a five mile radius so that y'all can see how the pump stations will work. The two pump stations are labeled on this exhibit near the top of the screen. And pump station number two, the one to the west, that will likely be serving the Wake County Public School site and Carolina Springs and the lands that are upstream of it will be the smaller the two stations, it will pump and collect the wastewater from that drainage basin, that natural basin, and then pump over that ridge at Woodfield Dead End Road into pump station number one. Pump station number one is a workhorse of the two. It will then repump the sewage from pump station two and whatever comes within its own drainage basin. And pump it approximately four miles to the Ugly Creek order reclamation facility, the treatment plant shown at the bottom of the screen, probably where the red line ends. So that is, you know, a ways to go with it, but we looked at other alternatives and given the infrastructure that is out here, this was the only viable alternative we had come up with. The site plan for pump station number one, this is a typical one. We'll get into this a little bit further during the site, site plan review process that will come up later in the agenda. This gives you an idea of what you would see at a pump station site. For those of you that are not familiar with it, on the left hand side, the site plan shows the layout of the pump station. Number one, it is at the intersection of Woods Creek Road and the Big Branch, that stream intersection, which is the lowest point in that basin on the north side of Woods Creek Road. And then pump station number two is also at the lowest point where Woods Creek Road intersects with the Little White Oak Creek. And this shows what it looks like in engineering wise. And then the landscape plan that goes along with it, where we're providing landscape buffering around it to screen it from views, from offsite views. And also shows the access, the circulation that's needed by the maintenance folks and, and the like. This is not open to the public. This is not a public facility, so it should not attract any people to it as it's not manned. And it is, as staff mentioned, it is gated and locked, except for town staff for maintenance and or other maintenance staff to use. This slide just depicts what a typical pump station would look like. If you can peel back all the layers of vegetation and could see inside, this is what one would look like. I will go into this a little bit more in detail with the site plan discussion, but these, this shows you what the typical components of a pump station would look like. And I've listed some of the items there that you would find inside a pump station site. These are some typical ones. You all have probably driven by some and seen them and may not have realized what they were. The one at the left hand side of your screen is actually the Wildwood subdivision pump station that's in town. You could see from the road that you can barely see the top of the structures in that station because the vegetation has grown. And as soon as it keeps growing, it will cover up most of what you will see. The one on the right hand side is not in the town. It's an apex, but it gives you an idea of what one would look like. This is a much larger station than the ones we're talking about, but it gives you an idea with the security fence and the vegetation when it first may get a step, put in, what it may look like. The landscape we're proposing is much denser than that one that's shown there. This is more of an illustrative of what this station number one would look like. Number two would probably look just like this when it comes in very similarly. This is a, an aerial view of what the station would look like with the vegetation at maturity. You could see within the past vegetation, this is Woods Creek Road along the bottom here of the screen, and this is that side road that would take you back into the neighborhood that's proposed in the future. There's a proposed pond to the north of this pump station site that provides additional separation and buffering between any of the homes and the pump station site. And as you can tell, it's, it's pretty dense through what you'd see from the sky, looking down at it. The next slide shows you more of a ground level bird eye, eye view from your car or if you're walking. This is at the intersection of that side stream, Woods Creek Road, looking in to the site. And you can, this is the pump station behind these trees here, when the trees are mature and the shrubbery, you really don't see it from this vantage point. This is another view, if you're driving down Woods Creek Road, looking west and the pump station is back behind these trees here, behind the sidewalk, this pathway. You know, we've got a lot of landscaping in front of it that will provide some screening as well for that. So what I like to do to wrap up this first part of the presentation is enter into the record as part of the special exception use, the ten findings of fact. So I like to just kind of touch on those and enter those in for the record. The pump station use is not going to be injurious to public health, safety, comfort, the community standards, or the general welfare of the public. Contrary, the pump station will provide a means to protect the public health, safety, welfare by collecting the wastewater that's generated and sending it properly to the disposal point. Number two, the pump station use will not adversely impact the adjacent area of property values. While the location of the stations are suffered primarily based on topography and pump stations are often found in residential settings. We have also shown that we're going to provide landscaping, buffering and separation from the future homes that will not be an eyesore detract from property values. Number three, the pump station use is consistent with the character of the district. The pump station is an ancillary use within the residential areas of the neighborhood district. And pump stations are often found in residential and commercial settings. So this is not atypical. Number four, the proposed use will conform to town development standards as we continue through the design and permitting process. Number five, the proposed station's use will have sufficient access drives to allow maintenance vehicles to access the pump station site to provide and provide safe ingress and egress for those vehicles. Number six, the pump station use will provide safe, convenient. Number six, the pump station use will provide safe, convenient access to maintenance and emergency vehicles. The location of the station being right next to Woods Creek Road will minimize noise, odor layer to adjoining residential properties. Number seven, the proposed lot or the structure has adequate facilities for its intended use. This is not, as I mentioned, a public building or facility, so there is no need to have restrooms or cooking facilities or other things that you would find in another type of special use. This is a closed site, and no people will work or access it only for maintenance. Number eight, the pump station use will not have impacts to schools, utilities, or other emergency services. The pump station site will serve as a point for utilities and the upcoming school sites, so it will help the school as well. It is not going to be a burden to other infrastructure in town. Number nine, the site plan arrangement of the pump station will harmonize with the adjacent properties. The site is going to be adequately screened from off-site views and is located near the main thoroughfare of the project and will not disrupt and be in harmony with the other uses within Carolina Springs. Lastly, number 10, the pump station use is not designed to be larger or more intense than it needs to be. It will be designed to handle the sewer flows from the basin itself and the areas upstream. It is therefore based on this information, my professional opinion, that we meet the findings of fact with the special use exception, and we're here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good job. Questions, comments so far? Looking good? Thumbs up. Thanks, sir. Get back, Sean.
There are no additional questions. We have two suggested motions on the screen for your consideration.
Okay, for number one? This point? Yes? Who wants to grab it?
I'm making motion to adopt resolution 2014 to make and accept the findings of fact for consideration of and to approve special exception uses. Second.
What's been made, second in the roll call, Dan Berry?
Aye.
Pete Wilson?
Aye.
Christine Kelly?
Aye.
Sean McGrath?
Aye.
Aaron Wolf?
Aye.
Unanimous approval, number two?
Motion to approve master plan for Carolina Springs. Second.
What's been made, Dan Berry?
Aye.
Pete Wilson?
Aye.
Christine Kelly?
Aye.
Sean McGrath?
Aye.
Aaron Wolf?
Aye.
That's unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Next item on the agenda, which sort of been talked about to agree, I have number eight, new business Carolina Springs pump station number one preliminary site plan, and that will be? Bronwyn? Is that you in there?
Yes, hello. Yep, I'm Bronwyn Bishop from the Engineering Department. We just talked about this, but this is the preliminary site plan for pump station number one. Purpose is to consider the preliminary site plan for pump station number one, and your requested action will be to approve, deny, or defer that site plan. After we get it.
Okay.
All right, so here's the overall look at the utilities on site. Once again, and here's the location of that pump station number one. Here's just a slide that kind of highlights the main feature. So here's a gravity main coming into the site and the force main leaving the site. You got a good look at where the force main is going to from Mr. Tang's presentation. Got the access points here, access off of Woods Creek Road is a right-in-only access. And through here, it's a one-way travel aisle. So the truck will come in and leave and turn left onto the new public residential street and exit through Woods Creek Road to avoid any maintenance trucks going through that residential area. That is the purpose behind that. And then here's a slide just kind of highlighting the landscaping that I'd already talked about, but we do have an opaque landscaping requirement around the pump station. Pretty robust, and then semi-opaque right against the thoroughfare. Then there is a tree preservation area back behind here in between the pump station site and the residential. And I can welcome applicants back up.
Thank you.
Well, this would be a very brief presentation because you all have seen this, so bear with me. I'm just going to enter this for the record. Again, we're tonight considering pump station number one only. This is, as I mentioned before, the workhorse of the two stations. This station will basically serve all of Carolina Springs and the lands upstream of it as well, and the future school and the iceplex and everybody that drains into it naturally. Again, the pump station site plan, as Ms. Bishop just showed as well, this shows the layout, and we have been working with the staff on the site plan to meet the engineering and design standards of the town. Again, the landscape plan shows the opaque landscaping, as she just mentioned, that we have around it. So this is surrounded pretty much by evergreen landscaping, so you should not be able to see this once everything is planted, and it's pretty robust compared to some of the ones that I showed you earlier. I'm going to touch a little bit on the components of the site plan and the pump station. We also have Dave McClure, who's the engineer for the pump station, in case you all have any specific questions. Pump station typically consists of a wet well, which is underground. Think of it as a large manhole that collects the gravity sewer waste, and it's shown here in this picture by this round circle, that concrete slab is basically the wet well where the sewage enters. It'll have an electrical building to hide all the things that need to be weatherproof. This is that building in this example building, a chemical tank here for any kind of odor control device or any other chemicals that may be delivered to the site. And then a emergency generator in case power goes out, we have to have a backup system. That's this feature here next to the building. There's a security light as well, I think that was discussed, the town requires a security light on the site. This wooden pole with a light on top of it is that light there. A jib crane, for those of you that don't know what that is, that's this red crane here. They come in different colors, this one just happens to be red. And that is used to basically hoist up and lower the pumps that are inside that wet well. So when they need maintenance or they need to be swapped out, they have a means to be able to pull those out. And then, of course, we mentioned the gated security fence around it. The town requires a six-foot fence along with three strands of barbed wire around the top of this thing to keep it secured and safe. And of course, the access door, the gates are locked when there's no maintenance going on. This is a slide that shows you a little bit about what the jib crane is. Typically, this one is yellow in this example. They vary in height, I believe this one, based on what we need to do, will be about 15 feet tall. So that would be the height under this boom allows it to pull the stuff up and have room to maneuver and swing out of the way. The electrical building here shown is approximately eight feet tall in height. It's really to house the items that need to be out of the elements of the weather. Same images as before, just to give you an idea of what these pump stations look like in real life that we've all seen and probably have driven by some. And again, these are the same illustrators that show you how this will look in the future when the pump station is completed and screened from off-site views. And that concludes my presentation, and we'll be here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant?
When do you expect the second pump station to come up?
I would suspect that we are working right now with Wake County Public Schools on it. They are probably going to be moving forward with their school plan shortly, so I would imagine sometime later this year, if COVID doesn't get the rest of us all delayed. But sometime later this year, you'll probably see second site plan for that one come in, so. Thanks.
Other questions?
You talking for maintenance vehicles going in and out, or just standard trucks? Are you talking anything that's commercial size, larger trucks?
I think the town requires a, is it a WB-50 truck, I believe, or a larger type of maintenance vehicle that can transport the chemicals and/or the pump equipment to serve that. So it'll be larger than a, probably larger than a FedEx truck, let's say, or UPS truck, but those vehicles would be able to circulate in and out of there, as Ms. Bishop mentioned, around that driveway.
Other questions or comments? Very special. Thank you, sir. Am we ready for a motion?
Just got one comment before we go to that.
Bill?
The reason I ask that question is, I drove out there again today just to make sure I could recollect my, as we're talking about getting closer to actual construction and things going on out there, which is awesome to see this develop moving forward. However, you know, as I'm driving out Old Holly Springs, whoever hasn't driven that road recently, Old Holly Springs Apex Road, and it took a very small trailer being towed behind a normal truck to stop traffic for about two minutes as other traffic was coming towards town in front of the Wake County firearms training center. That bridge there, the old rickety wooden bridge, wooden rails, that's a undersized bridge.
Yep.
We've got a major problem out there still, so as we start to talk about this, and that's why I brought up the question about the truck getting out there. I mean, heck, the trucks getting out there are not going to be able to even use that bridge that we have right now that goes out there. So as we look forward to this, you know, big, beautiful development that's going on out there, the access to get to and from town out there is very hampered by the bridges that are around there. And there's another bridge that we've talked about, which is just shy of this pump station out on Woods Creek Road that is also a challenge. So both of those bridges.
Yeah, Kendra.
Just highlight, we've got to, we've got to address this. Yeah, we have.
It's not a new issue. Yeah, you're right.
We have, but.
It's very important.
But we're getting closer to moving forward, so.
And Ron, it's an NCDOT bridge.
I'm just saying, would you can pay back to Kendra? We're talking about the bridge, unless you want to make a comment. If you do, yes, please do.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question. I sent it to Kendra earlier just to see if we can get an update of where we stand on the bridges.
Yeah, yeah. So we do have kind of an update on that. It was planned to be put out to bid on January 2020. That got delayed because of funding issues with NCDOT, like Mr. Harrington just said. But it is planned for bid opening in January of 2022. So that's the next date, but also I'll mention that the design has been delayed. So that's kind of our next bell for right now, but that's the update.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Good job. Just have one more comment. I have been anxious to get this project going for a long time, and I got to say, the residents are great, their buildings are great, this is great, that's great. Come on, Iceplex, it's got me going, okay? Come on, Iceplex. With that, how about a motion?
Motion to approve pump station site number one for Carolina Springs.
Second.
What's been made, second in the roll call, Dan Berry?
Aye.
Pete Wilson?
Aye.
Christine Kelly?
Aye.
Sean McGrath?
Aye.
Graham Wolf?
Aye.
Approved unanimously again. Thank you all. If you guys want to stay around, you can. If you want to leave, we'll just stop for a second or just stay. We're almost done, well, kind of. When I say almost done, I should not have said that. Other business, I usually talk about traffic, crosswalk safety. I'm going to talk about something I've never talked about before, and that is if you look at the world today and you look at our areas again, I want to suggest let's all be nice to each other and agree to disagree. I know that's hard to do, but it's time. We need a lot more of that than we've got going right now. There's a lot of, well, as I told somebody kind of jokingly, there's a lot of hate in this world, and it's kind of true. That would be my comment. Others?
So this past weekend, I'm going to take my mask off, it is hard to breathe today, it is humid. So this past weekend, as everybody knows, I was a participant in the Better Together Black Lives Matter March that we had here in Holly Springs, and I just wanted to say how proud I am of our community, how we came together and protested in a peaceful way that we can all be proud of. And while I was the one standing rather precariously on top of a lamppost that was our plan, I want to thank several of my colleagues who came out to listen and support the marchers. There was a lot of shared pain, a lot of shared hope, a lot of shared love on the streets of Holly Springs, and I can only speak for myself when I say that I hope that that's just a jumping off point for many more conversations. Amazingly, the event was organized by three local teenagers, and they did a great job. They coordinated with some adult organizers as well, and they involved our police department in the planning from the beginning. And I think, I think it's really important that we take a second and thank our police department for their partnership, not only in Saturday's events, but also in the numerous events that had happened before. It's very easily, easy to look around at what's happening nationally and even locally in some neighboring cities and see the police as the enemy, but in Holly Springs, we're really lucky to have a police force that has viewed themselves and has really acted as partners in this movement, not only protecting protesters, but supporting them and helping them plan. Mayor, you and I were at one event where Captain Patterson basically organized the protest for the protesters, honestly.
Spoke from the heart, if I may.
That's right. And that's something that, folks, they're not going to see that on the internet, and when they come out to the protest, they're not going to see that, but I've seen it time and time again. Captain Patterson was right at the head of the march. He lent his bullhorn to one of the protesters so that they could be heard more clearly.
Yep.
We had a few participants who were suffering from the heat and collapsed. Our police were right there to help them immediately. And then afterwards, Councilwoman Kelly and I and a few of the march participants hitched a ride back in one of the police pickups back to Wumble Park, which was definitely much appreciated. Now, does this mean our town is perfect? No, but I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'm incredibly proud of how proactive and introspective our police department has been over the past few weeks, and honestly, long before then. For example, when we presented them, or when they were presented with the eight can't wait policy reforms, our police quickly jumped at the opportunity to review their own policies. And I found, you know, unsurprisingly, that most of them were already in place here in Holly Springs, and the one that wasn't, they fixed immediately. So as we, as we move forward, I really encourage our community to view and treat our officers as partners in this reform and not as adversaries, because I know I've seen that the goals and the values of our community and our town and our police department are aligned, and I think if we work well together and continue to work well together, we can do some wonderful things. So thank you to everybody who came out Saturday. Thank you to our organizers who put on the event, made sure it happened. Thank you to my colleagues who came out to support them, and thank you to our police department for your continued commitment to our community.
As we say in the old country, here, here.
I can't agree more. I'd say I can't agree more. Well said.
Well said, Dan, there.
Yep. Again, just, just one thing to follow on with Aaron, and we had a follow-on conversation with that adult organizer, Councilman Wilson and I did today with Chantel, Chantel Wilkins. And, you know, a good, a good conversation about, about where and how we can work towards unity and not division. And I know the mayor spoke of this a little bit as well, and, and I would like to mention that. And thanks to Councilman Wolf for speaking about our, our law enforcement officers. And I think that's very important because all of us on this up here have also gotten a rash of emails, not just on the masks that we talked about earlier, but we've also seen some of the other emails from folks that would like to agitate and potentially divide our community by asking for defunding the police.
Yep.
And I would, I would caution folks, and I would ask that we all kind of rephrase that, if you will. If that's your narrative and that's what you want to say, then, then ask yourself if what you really mean by saying that is you want to defund law enforcement. I think that's a different narrative, and I think it's one for us to consider carefully. And that we talk about potential bad actors, and, and while thankfully, we don't have any of those, to our knowledge, bad actors in our police department, and we have a very good interaction between our police department and our law enforcement officers and our community, as, as, as we all got to witness this Saturday, as, as we were all out there. community, as, as, as we all got to witness this Saturday, as, as we were all out there, we have to be cautious that people don't use this as that, I will call it, a false narrative, because we're talking about defunding bad actors, and that's about trying to root out bad actors, and that's one thing, to try and, you know, take out people that are not compliant or not up to standard versus trying to defund our law enforcement, because we do have laws, and yes, we can't ever get, probably like Councilman Wolf mentioned early on this evening, to 100% enforcement of laws, but we do enforce laws, and we do have them there for a reason, and they are very valuable to our society, and it's unfortunate that we have had some incidents against our police department in these last several weeks of unrest, but have gone, you know, undiscussed, and thankfully, due to the grace of our police department, they have gone undiscussed, and they have turned the cheek, if you will, turned, turned the other side, turned, turned the face the other way and walked away, and, and that is a testament to our law enforcement officers that we have here. And, and unfortunately, you know, as, as folks sometimes are, and we've had this discussion about body cams, might want to remind some folks that, you know, were those body cams on those police officers who have been, you know, assaulted in some form or fashion over those last couple of weeks, those residents may have found themselves on the receiving eye, receiving side of law enforcement that wasn't so kind to them. So I ask that we all look at a equal level of grace across the board as, as we look to continue to partner between discussing how we can move forward in a better fashion and also continue to support our law enforcement officers, who are very important to us here in Holly Springs.
I'd just like that, because I think that's well done and well said, and very important. Just like to add, I think I said it last meeting, the transparent portal on our website, you can see it when you go to our website, please, 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 take the time, because I've even talked to some people who were very, shall we say, pointed against broad brushing our police department, along with Minneapolis perhaps, and I said, please go to the transparent portal on our website, because it does tell the rest of the story, shall we say? And again, I would just ask anybody, everybody that wants to know more about our police department, it's all the, it's one of the best things I've ever seen in my 19 years. And thinking of best things I've ever seen, it's now the manager's report. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thought you were done.
I do have three things I wanted to add, and I'll be.
No, it's all right.
One is, this week, on Thursday, I believe, the Wake County Board of Elections is making a decision on the 20 early voting site.
Yep.
There's 20 picked up for discussion. So as a council, I just want to put out there, would we consider putting out a letter to them to say that we all would like the WES Center as one of the early voting locations? We've had elections before without that site, and it's, you know, it's problematic for our residents to go out to other towns, and I think looking at the comparison of all the numbers, we did really well at the early voting site, and I hope you've earned the opportunity to continue.
They do a good job there.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Mayor, you've been working on this as well, we are aware that there's odor issues with the Southern Wake landfill. We are talking with folks from the county, the mayor is talking with multiple people, I've had some conversations as well. They are looking at a pilot program that you've talked about before, that right now is in the works, and we're watching it closely. We understand it's an issue, we understand that we have to figure out something because we cannot continue to do it the way it smells. So the commissioners have been great at talking with us, and we're aware, but you can please keep filling out the form, please keep talking to us about it, because that is definitely a high, high topic for us to resolve. And the last thing, just to follow up on what my counterparts have said, I do appreciate the emails that we've gotten. I think that there are, it's a moment of listening to a different conversation that we've had a chance to have before, and there are nuances, I know that you've talked about some of the messages, there are nuances to some of the maybe frustration or anger or positivity in there that I'm trying to dig through and understand, some of the words like "defend the police," it's not one thing for everybody, so what does that mean? And what I'm hearing, it's not that we don't want police, it's that maybe it's looking at another way to not escalate as much. So I'm taking a little time to learn what some of these concepts are that people have, because there's not one version of how they're described, and would continue to welcome folks to reach out to me. Been meeting with a lot of people one-on-one in a social distance way, because I'm trying to understand walking in other people's shoes. So I have learned a lot in the last three weeks, and I, and I want to keep listening, so, and I know we all have, so that's all I want to say, thank you for doing that, because it's, it's hopefully learned and changed and look at other perspectives, and I think that's important, yeah.
Let me just add real briefly to that about the landfill. I want you to know that Matt Calibria and Sage Hutchinson are two very good friends of this town. They're both on the Board of Commissioners, and as of today, they are going to start a 60 to 90 day test to continue. The test is going on right now for, I cannot explain it from the standpoint of a chemist, this highly oxygenated water, it seems to be working well, and the county, because of our, shall we say, help with them.
Persuasion.
Is persuasion is a better word, is going to hire their own people to do the spraying now, and.
In a particular area, Mayor, the one that they said they weren't looking now.
Yeah, and they're adding 41 or six acres to it, so.
Yeah.
It's just a good thing it's happening, and let's hope it works. It'll never cure everything, we know that, but many of us and many of you have been working on this for, shall we say, since 1995, something like that. So anyway, enough of that. Now.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Two quick items, Mayor and Council. First off, I want to thank you, this month, you've had two extra council meetings, a budget workshop in early June, and then this meeting tonight. Thank you for your willingness to have a couple extra meetings and work through your business, and I think after tonight, hopefully, we're back on track with our planning items in terms of what you'll see going forward here, so keep my fingers crossed on that one. The second item is, you do not have a, just reminding you, for the public, you do not have a July 7th council meeting, that first Tuesday in July, as you know, in your calendar, you approved and not have a meeting, so see you at a workshop on the 14th of July. Thank you very much.
Unless they want another one, right?
Unless you want one.
I might just come and sit here.
I didn't think that'd get a rousing game.
So happy Independence Day, and I, and I, and I guess we're all getting double time this month for, okay? Double, yeah, right.
Or triple.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Counselor, postation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, would like to update you on one potential litigation matter relating to the Green Earth Crossing proposal. I think we've got 18 minutes to talk about that with you, given that you're canceling your deal, so I don't think so. So you've been entertaining a motion there and to post it. I always love this part.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We're in postation. Thank you all for staying. Thank you.